I could start.
Go ahead.
Because everybody's here, okay?
Well, what's your time on the sheet?
You've got a committee.
Oh, what's my time on the sheet?
Are the cameras on?
I don't have the sheet, the time sheet.
No, I don't have the video.
You don't have the sheet?
Me neither.
No sound.
You're right.
Okay, Sarah.
Can I go, but is it seven?
Because where's that, do you have the time sheet?
I don't have the agenda.
Me neither. That's the problem, I don't know whether I'm on.
I can go first.
Screen on the camera, but everybody's voices are on the camera, so.
Can I, can I go, can I go?
Because we don't have the time sheet.
Did you do an agenda?
Sheets right here.
What, what time is mine?
They all say seven, 7:01, 7:02, 7:03.
Okay, let's see. What time is it happening, when am I?
Start yours.
Public Safety, Public Works, 7:01, I can't go till 7:06. Public Works, you can go, Kate.
Do you have public works to someone?
Okay, I can go right now.
You can go, yeah.
I'm 7:02, thank you ever so kindly. Oi, oi, oi.
You, you, you got anybody here?
Me, yeah, that's all I need.
Oh, there you go, you're awesome.
That's all I need. I got the girl I need, please. All the hour. So I'd like to call Public Works Committee to order at 7:02 this evening. I have one item to discuss this evening. So on December 31st, support for the remote document for the retrieval software which is currently used remotely accessed sewer ties is going to be discontinued in the wastewater treatment plant. And then it will be no longer compatible with the sewer ties that they have now. And it won't be compatible with the new software and upgrade is needed. So they are asking, wastewater is asking for an $8,000 transfer from the wastewater enterprise reserve to the maintenance of the software. So I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer $8,000 from account 6000-578300 wastewater enterprise fund reserve fund for transfer to account 6000-524211 wastewater enterprise fund maintenance of software regarding the need for funds to upgrade the software used to remotely access sewer tie sheets and to also convert all existing files.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you ever so kindly. Also, I just want to make a notation that there will be a public hearing on December 18th to install five new poles at Dale Court Extension and relocate a pole and renumber a pole. And I just wanted to make that public known. I'd like to call for an adjournment of Public Works Committee at 7:04.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 7:04, thank you ever so kindly.
Okay, um, capital improvements, Richard? Who's got capital improvements?
No, Ty is next.
But Ty is, wait a minute.
He's personnel and human services.
No, he can't start till 7:07. Who's capital improvements?
I am.
That's you, you can start.
Excellent, I will call the Capital Improvement City Development Committee to order at 7:04. I have one motion on the docket, but I need Council Dolan.
Then you can't, you can't.
He needs to. Where'd Council Dolan go? Would you just knock on the door and ask Laura to come back?
I'll take over, but I don't have anybody here either.
And I can't do mine.
I need Laura.
Can't do mine for seven.
Thank you. From the docket of December 4th, 2018, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor in accordance with Chapter 1, Section 12 of the revised ordinances to the city of Attleboro to allow the plant department to expend approximately $500,000 in any further amendments of the grant from the Commonwealth Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, dam and seawall fund program relative to the Dodgeville Pond Dam renovations Phase 1B construction project.
Second.
Thank you, Council Dolan. So Council Waterman, you were not with us in the last capital improvement tour of the Dodgeville Dam. This is a multi-year project that has been largely funded through state dollars and has taken city dollars as well to fund. And it has a very long view for that dam. The bottom line was that if we didn't have the dam there, the Dodgeville Pond would be a very shallow winding stream. And that in flood stages, much of the silt that has gathered in Dodgeville Pond would wash out and into the Dariquance today, erasing a lot of the progress that's made to clean the bank. So the council voted earlier last year, before you became a councillor, to fund this Dodgeville Dam project on the long-term plan. But this is $500,000 coming from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which we do not have to match. So I would encourage your approval. Do you have any questions, Council Dolan? Council Waterman?
Did you know?
No question.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. That concludes the business the Capital Improvement City Development Committee has to bring this evening. We call for a committee meeting at the next available time. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, second.
Thank you.
Sorry. No, we don't leave that open forever tonight.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Listen, give me a break.
Motion passes unanimously. We declare the Capital Improvement City Development Committee adjourned at 7:07. Thank you.
Traffic and transportation is canceled for this evening. We do have our traffic and, uh, Traffic Study Commission meeting next Thursday if anyone would like to come.
I'd like to call Public Safety Emergency Management Committee to order this evening. I have three motions.
I'm right here for you, Pete.
Thank you. From the docket of December 4th, 2018, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer $15,860.39, excuse me, from account 11241000-578300 citywide reserve fund for transfer to account 12101000-585021 police security system regarding the need for funds to replace the police department access control management system.
Second.
Okay, this particular system actually is for the property rooms, detectives' rooms, evidence rooms, so we can see who goes in and out as they can. We had an inadequate system some ten years ago, and we had a problem. We put a system in, it is no longer serviceable, like all this electronic stuff we get. So this is an upgrade, will include everything, soup to nuts, to get back in, in where we belong to protect evidence and property that's brought in, left off. And as Kyle said, I mean, it's, it's a necessary evil, either that or you place somebody at the doors, hand out keys, and we've run into problems. Yes, mister?
So Peter, this is in the capital improvement plan and has been in the capital improvement plan for a few years.
Hasn't.
And during our tour of the capital improvement survey earlier last year, the chief pointed out to the councillors who were present that that system was limping along on a, on a women of prayer. It gets very heavy use, and, and that's why it.
Evidently, Richard and my fellow councillors, it's broke.
Yep.
So it's.
You have my full support.
It's necessary to replace it. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Secondly, from the docket of December 4th, 2018, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor in accordance with Chapter 1, Section 12 of the revised orders to the city of Attleboro to allow the planning and land use department to expend approximately $18,000 in any further grant amendment from the grant from the Massachusetts Energy Management Agency to help fund in part the update of the city's pre-disaster hazardous migration plan.
Second.
I was in with Gary today as a matter of fact, and we have one in place, and this is strictly an upgrade. It's not a complete new plan. If it was, we'd be talking, he said, $50,000, $60,000. It does carry a $6,000 matching from the city. But we did, through Gary's diligence, he received, and he applied for and received that $18,000 grant towards it from the state. And of course, you understand this is a federal mandate, we should do this, so he said this will involve police department, fire department, his department, he named it, there's about a half a dozen different departments that will take part in this committee. And it's $6,000 that we have to come up with. But it's a federal mandate. Yes, Heather?
I think that former, former President Cook would be happy to know that it's a stand, state mandate, but they gave us grant money for it, so it's not fully unfunded.
No. But it is a federal mandate.
But it is a federal.
We deal with a lot of state ones.
We certainly do. So this is a good one to have. So you have my support.
Is there, if there's any questions, I'll get them answered for next week, just get them to our administrative assistant, and I'll get back to Gary. I didn't feel there was any need for him to come before us at this time. Any other, no other questions? Hearing none, all is, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Third and last, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to appropriate $6,000 from account 1000-35900 on designated fund balance free cash general government to fund 2319 hazardous migrate, migration plan regarding the local match for the grant from the Massachusetts Energy Management Agency and update the city's pre-disaster hazardous migration plan.
Second.
This goes along with the first motion. It's just us putting the money up so they can get it done. And by the way, this is an outside agency that comes in, an outside contractor that comes in and does this, it's not done in-house. That's where the eighteen plus the six goes. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you very much, I have no other business this evening.
Excuse me, Peter, excuse me, before you adjourn, can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
Thank you. I don't know if you're aware of this or not, but over the weekend, Engine 4 at the fire station, Briggs Corner Fire Station?
Yeah.
So we ran out of apparatus, engine apparatus, this weekend. I got two calls early, early, early Sunday morning, I actually called the council president and the mayor at the time. We ran out of apparatus to cover Engine 4, Briggs Corner, which was detrimental, especially this weekend with La Sallete just starting up.
Yeah.
Yeah. So in speaking with the mayor, he was telling me that we don't have a full-time mechanic at the fire station, so I'm wondering if you know anything about the difference between us, right now I guess they use a part-time, they use a firefighter, lieutenant, at lieutenant's pay, and he comes in part-time and fixes the apparatus, but we have no backups whatsoever, so we're actually borrowing Rehobis right now, which we're very fortunate, in a lot of, a lot of towns, municipalities, they do that regularly if they run out of apparatus. So something you might want to look into, because I understand.
I know they're looking for a mechanic.
Yeah.
I know somebody that was approached.
Mm-hmm.
And it doesn't pay enough. Sorry to say, this one particular person that was approached for the job, so I know they, they are actively trying to get a mechanic, but at this point.
We're paying a heck of a lot right now, we're paying lieutenants pay and it gets overtime, that's like overtime, so we, obviously we can pay it.
You can make all kinds of promises, you can tell them you give them overtime, you can tell them stipends.
But it's just something I think we should, you know, keep in mind.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other?
I think that would be good for personnel and human services to keep in mind as well, so.
Good point, thank you.
That would probably be the area in which it would be best, I suppose.
Hearing none, I move to adjourn, 7:16.
Seven, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you.
Sarah, would you like to cancel zoning and land use?
I have just a few updates, so.
Oh, for zoning?
Yes. So I'll call Zoning and Land Use Committee to order at 7:16, it'll be very brief though. Council proposes to let everybody know that there's six public hearings for marijuana special permits scheduled for next week, December 4th, and that he's waiting for a ruling on the planning board regarding last week's public hearing on the zoning ordinance change, and that he'll plan to move forward when he hears back from the planning board. That's it for updates for that, so I will call for an adjournment.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, we're adjourned at seven.
I don't think you ever called it to order, actually. It was really just a, just a.
Updates.
Yeah, it was just an update, so if you could cancel it, that would be great, if you could just say you canceled zoning and land.
Okay, cancel zone, zoning and land use committee, but I just had a few updates.
There you go, perfect.
Okay. Budget and appropriations is next, but change.
Budget and appropriations, cancel.
Thank you very much.
And that's how you are.
So actually, if, we have to have a conversation before she convenes her thing. That would be terrific. Who's on your committee?
My committee is, thank you.
Perfect.
Okay, so I, I would like to call the city property and claims to order at 7:17. The members of my committee are Council Blair and Council Holmes, and I have one, two, three, three motions on the docket this evening. So from the docket of December 4th, 2018, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor in accordance with Section 1-12 of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro to accept the donation of Stop &amp; Shop gift certificates from Larry Quahlia totaling $50 to the veterans services.
Second.
Thank you. I personally think it's pretty self-explanatory, but do I have any questions, concerns?
Now, just a comment if I might?
Yes.
Larry does this quite often. He's dedicated, he's not only dedicated else, but he's dedicated to the veterans and people less fortunate, and I, I personally thank him very much for his donations, and I'm sure we all do.
I, I agree, I think he's done, I, I mean, his name shows up here quite frequently, so, thank you for that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor in accordance with Section 1-12 of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro to accept the donation of Stop &amp; Shop gift certificates from the American Legion Post Number 20 totaling $300 to veterans services.
Second.
Thank you. Again, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and, and we could say the same about Stop &amp; Shop, they give a lot of gift certificates to the veterans during the entire year.
That was the, who, who don't?
From the, uh, the Stop &amp; Shop from the American Legion, the Stop &amp; Shop, yeah.
They're very active, the group that are there, both the Legion and the VFW, supporting our veterans, they're veterans.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to declare the following water department vehicle as surplus for resale value and available for disposition. It's a 1987 GMC 3500 dump truck, the VIN number is 1GDGR34J8HS514022, there's 72,428 miles on it, and it's in poor condition.
Second.
Thank you. Again, pretty self-explanatory, any questions, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, that motion passes, and that's all the business City Property and Claims Committee has this evening, and I'd like to request an adjournment.
Second.
Okay, and we are adjourned at 7:20. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's it.
I can call ordinance election and legislative matters committee to order at 7:20. Members are myself, Council Waterman, and Council Jackson, I just have two updates. So I, we'll be sending out some more information, and I'm waiting for a response from the city solicitor regarding having, the legislative branch having their own city solicitor, I think I sent out some information back in September, I wanted to get new updated information from Deb Gould, so she has the whole year, how much the council has spent on a city solicitor, so we can get an idea of how much, how much this would technically cost the city. So I'm hoping to have that out probably in the next week, so I can bring that out to, for us to discuss at the next committee meeting. And then the other update I have is regarding the, the waste, plastic waste reduction ordinance. I'm working on that right now and gathering some information, I've heard some talk of potential, like, fees instead of using this approach, so I'm trying to figure out what's the best approach and gathering some information. And if you also have any, anything that you'd like me to look into, I can certainly do that, and hoping to have an update in the next two weeks about those two things. Questions?
At this time. Are you discussing little lungs this evening?
Oh, no, I don't, I, I don't have, I'm actually going to be looking into that one as well.
Okay, that's what they're here for, so, I just wanted to let them know that that's not happening.
Oh, yes.
He may want to touch you afterwards.
Sure. So I will call for an adjournment.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, we are adjourned at 7:20.
Does the Waterman have a question for you?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
So either license or personnel and human services, or who?
You guys can rock, paper, scissors, who would like to go next?
I'll do, whatever you want, do you?
I defer.
Okay. I'd like to call License Committee to order at 7:22. Okay, so I have, I don't know, like, seven. From the docket of December 4th, 2018, I entertain a motion to approve the application for a coin op amusement device license for two merry-go-round and a truck device from Demula Supermarkets Market Basket at 1200 Newport Ave, Attleboro.
Second. Are you reading all of these?
I was gonna do like in chunks.
Okay, that's fine, sorry.
If that's all right.
I withdraw my second, chunk away.
I'll let you know when the first, if you're following along, you'll know when the first one's done. I entertain a motion to approve the application from Trittown Auto of 1850 County Street for a Class 2 license with four customer parking spaces and six, six display spaces to buy and sell second-hand motor vehicles. Oh, excuse me, I entertain a motion to approve the application from Trittown Auto, 1850 County Street, Attleboro for a Class 3 license with four customer spaces and six display spaces to buy and sell second-hand motor vehicles. Next, I entertain a motion to approve the application for Junior's Bar &amp; Grill, 147 Pine Street for an automatic amusement device license for two pool tables and one jukebox.
Second. And you have to do a.
They're all separate.
They're all separate motions, so because they're all separate, read, as, you read them off as an individual motion, they individually have to be seconded, and.
Yeah, I was sitting here thinking the same thing.
Because, okay, which is fine, so shall we, do we need to start again?
Redo. Take back your second.
Take it back the second. As we were going along and I was seeing the automated amusement and stuff like that, I was like, oh, I was just gonna figure it out totally.
Okay.
I was just gonna let you keep going.
All right. Rewind. From the docket of December 4th, 2018, I entertain a motion to approve the application for a coin op amusement device license for two devices, a merry-go-round and a truck from Demula Supermarkets Market Basket at 1200 Newport Avenue, Attleboro.
Second.
Thank you. From the docket of December 4th.
You have to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those, any, any questions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. I entertain a motion, motion passes, I entertain a motion to approve the application for Trittown Auto of 1850 County Street, Attleboro for a Class 2 license with four customer parking spaces and six display spaces to buy and sell second-hand motor vehicles.
Second.
Any questions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. From the docket of December 4th, 2018, I entertain a motion to approve the application from Trittown Auto of 1850 County Street, Attleboro for a Class 3 license with four customer parking spaces, six display spaces to buy and sell second-hand motor vehicles.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. From the docket of December 4th, 2018, I entertain a motion to approve the application for Junior's Bar &amp; Grill at 147 Pine Street for an automatic amusement device license for two pool tables and one jukebox.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, from the docket of November 20th, 2018, I entertain a motion to approve the application for a Class 2 license from Gaspar Inc., DBA J Motor Group, 1856 County Street, Attleboro with four customer parking spaces and 20 display spaces. So these, this is the, the lady that had come before us for the public hearing. So, these, this is the, the lady that had come before us for the public hearing last week?
Oh, yeah.
Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. If you're following along, if I skip any, I'm just not reading them out yet.
These ones you can read in, because they're all the same, these ones you can read in a trunk.
All right.
The ones that you're.
Right, I'm just trying to figure out, so that one.
Yep.
Okay. One, two, three. Okay. I entertain a motion, uh, excuse me, from the docket of November twentieth, two thousand eighteen, I entertain a motion to approve the following applications for a Class Two auto renewals for two thousand nineteen. South Attleboro Auto Sales Inc. at four eleven Washington Street, Attleboro, with ten customer parking spaces and thirty display spaces.
Second.
All those in favor, oh, any questions?
So, if I may, just point of order, so these, these ones here, because they're all Class Two, the ones that she reads off, she can do this in, in the block, so were you?
I mean, there's only three anyway, so.
Well, just because then, when Virginia prepares the motion, it has, they all have, would have to be separate, if you're going to read them all separate, but these ones don't have to be that way.
Okay, so you want to take that?
Throw my second.
So, you have State Line Auto Brokers listed twice, twice with six customer parking spaces, forty-two display spaces, and fifty-five storage spaces in this motion.
Right, I, I see that.
Right, but she's not.
She hasn't read that yet.
I haven't gotten that yet.
Okay.
All right. The next one I have, again, from the docket of November twentieth, I entertain a motion to approve a Class Two auto renewal license for Cam's Automotive Service, DBA Paris Autobody at twenty-one Chadia Street, Attleboro, with nine customer parking spaces and twenty display spaces.
Second. Oh, wait, no, we're doing it in the blank again.
It's all mixed up.
I know, right, it is. It's okay, sorry, withdraw my second, read the third one, let's go.
Okay, does anybody have any, all right, so, the third one I have is State Line Auto Brokers, again, from the docket of November twentieth, State Line Auto Brokers Inc., one eleven fifteen Washington Street, Attleboro, with six customer parking spaces, forty-two display spaces, and fifty-five storage spaces. So, I'll speak for a second?
Do you have any more on?
No, I'm done, so.
Okay, so now we're going to second. Out of all those, that's, that's three.
Three, okay. Okay. So, I originally held some of these because they had too many cars, they weren't in compliance, so I've been working with everybody, and they have gotten to compliance. Now, so let's talk about State Line.
Yes, please.
So, as we know, we've had some issues. I've been, it's been my second job to go down there constantly, make sure there, everything's in line. Everything seemed in line, there's been a lot of construction and everything, so, and there's a lot of car dealerships and everything down there, and everything's a mishmash, you've got Schnitzer, and you've got, you know, the South Attleboro place right next door to State Line that has their own cars. And, um, so, I actually met Mr. Mararo. I always, I never say his last name.
Mr. State Line?
Right, so I had him meet me down there last Wednesday before the holiday. He gave me a tour, we had a nice, long, extensive discussion about everything that's expected of him. Oh, and I also wanted to add, on the state inspection, regarding the lemon law, when the Consumer Affairs and Business Regulation goes down, and they, they randomly inspect different car dealerships to make sure that every single car is labeled, I'm happy to say that State Line, State Line came in a hundred percent in compliance with that. So, again, I spoke to John for an extended period of time, told him that, you know, I represent licenses, I have to be able to come before this body and speak to them, following the rules, being in compliance, being legitimate. We had a little moment, and, so I'm ready to vote this out of committee, and obviously, I'll take any, any questions, if you have any questions.
Ms. Brinkett? Yeah, so, are, are they currently in compliance? Even with all of the construction and all the other things, are they currently in compliance? They are.
They, yeah, they're back to where they were with the forty-two spaces for display and the fifty-five in the pen. The pen's broken, like, a fence fell, and again, that building's gone, and, so it's a little bit of a mess, but.
Is there a reasonable expectation that they will be sending in an amended license at any time in the future with regards to this?
We didn't discuss that, it's kind of, I, I don't foresee that coming to fruition anytime soon. They have a lot, it looks like they have a lot of work to do down there as far as just, it's a, it's kind of a mess, it's construction debris everywhere and such, so, um, I, I don't know that at this point.
All right, so, you know, we've always stated to them, when they were in front of us, that if you are, all we've ever asked of them is for them to be in compliance. And if they are in compliance, there is no reason to withhold. At this time, there is no reason to withhold their, an approval of their.
Right, and, and he, he's aware that all eyes are on him, and, you know, and we're on good terms, as far as he always responds to my calls, you, you know, immediately, I've been down there, I mean, I get in my car, my GPS says ten minutes to eleven fifteen, what, you know what I mean? So, I've been down there a lot, and I, I told him everything I expect, that we expect, and he is in compliance now, and he knows all eyes are on him. So, again, I was thrilled to see that he was in compliance with the lemon laws, I was like, oh, God, please.
Right.
And, um, and he was, so, um, I, I feel comfortable voting this out of committee. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed, and that's it for me this evening, so I would like to adjourn License Committee at seven thirty-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at seven thirty-three, thank you.
Well, I would like to call the Personnel and Human Services Committee to Order at, we'll, we'll call it seven thirty-four, okay? We have six people to consider tonight, so I would first like to entertain a motion to confirm the following appointments. Before I say all the names, I would just like to ask Counselor Brinkett, can I do this one at a time, or should I do in a group of five?
I would just read the, all the names, it's fine.
But the, okay.
Just the, your first, your first motion here, from Brad to Scott, read those.
Right, right. So, I entertain a motion to confirm the following appointments. Brad Goldstein for the Cultural Council, for two years, expiring February two thousand twenty. Seth Hodge, Council on Human Rights, three years, expiring February two thousand twenty-one. Donovan Riley, appointed to the Youth Commission, for two years, expiring February two thousand twenty. Kurt Wheaton, appointed to the Council on Aging, for four years, expiring February two thousand twenty-two. And fifth, Scott Jones, appointed to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee for three years, February two thousand twenty-one. Second. I would entertain, I would ask for a second?
Peter gave you one.
I did, you have a second. Okay. Now, I have spoken to two of these folks. Spoke to Seth Hodge and Scott Jones, and they will, they are very glad to be nominated. And they will be here next week. I have been unable to reach the other three at this point, but I will continue to do so, and expect that they would be here next week, too. Where they can share, share themselves with us, we can ask questions. So, I'll entertain a vote to confirm them. All in favor? All in favor? Aye. Aye, and I say aye. So, three to nothing. Moving on. We have a, another individual, I, so I would entertain a motion to confirm the appointment of Ellen Parker, sixty-five Norgate Road, to the Council on Human Rights. That term to expire February two thousand twenty-one. Do we have a second? Second. Thank you. Let us have a vote, all say aye.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, excuse me.
You can find her up as well, she's here, if you'd be sure.
Okay, so we'll hold that vote for a second. We would like to have you come forward, Ellen, share, share yourself with us. Thank you for coming.
Oh, thank you for inviting me, yeah, I thought, I didn't think you brought me in here just to sit there, but that would have been fine. But, thank you, and I appreciate being nominated to the Human Rights Council, and I look forward to it. I've served, as most of you know, on the Historical Commission for a very long time, since nineteen ninety-two, so I think it's time for me to, to change, I think, you know, change it up a bit, and it's not that you're not going to probably hear me come on occasion still talking about historic preservation, because that's going to still remain important to me. But, I also felt that I did want to change, and human rights is very important to me, and just treating people with respect and kindness. And I do have a lot of friends that, in this last election particularly, and it bothered me, that were concerned about rights being taken away from them, that they have, and I, and I, and I think this is a place where I would like to put my emphasis and my voice to, you know, to try to help people, and, you know, buildings are important, but people are a lot more important, and that's, I would hope to be confirmed, and I look forward to serving, and. Anything else?
I'm fine, do we have any questions?
Thank you.
I'm absolutely delighted that you want to serve.
Thank you, and thank you for having me.
So, without any other questions, I'll call for a vote. All say aye? Aye. Aye. Motion passes. That is all the business we have.
The last one? You have the last motion?
Oh, yes, excuse me, we do have one more piece of business. So, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars from account one one two four one zero 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 five seven eight three zero zero. Citywide Reserve Fund for transfer to account one one two four one zero 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 dash five seven eight zero two zero, the citywide bills from previous years. Second. In order to reimburse an employee for successfully completing courses enrolled in during fiscal year two thousand eighteen. Second. You have a second? Let us have a vote, all of those who say aye.
Discussion.
Excuse me, I forgot the discussion again, thank you. Any discussion?
That seems to be about the most I've seen come across the council. Was this an entire year's education of one individual?
To my knowledge, it was.
Do you know what department the individual was in?
Aye. This individual began as the city's environmental planner, conservation agent, in two thousand seventeen.
Thank you. You've answered my question.
I've answered your question.
Yes, thank you.
Ty, you might want to refer to Diana just for a second.
Thank you.
I defer to Diana.
Thank you, I, I did hold that, because I, I wanted to get a little bit more information, and it was three, it was three semesters, and it's kind of backdated, so it's, it's really, it did seem like a lot, but it's really, I think, about close to two thousand each semester, so, it's just being backdated.
That's why it's such a big number.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
So. I'll provoke, yeah, going to move for a vote now, we're ready. Any other questions? So, we have a vote now, all those saying aye? Aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion passes. So, I move that we adjourn committee?
Second.
Seven forty. All those voting aye? Aye. Aye.
So, you said you adjourned at seven forty?
At seven forty-one, we adjourn. It's a wrap.
No, no, there's a special committee on council rules and procedures and the committee on tax abatement review.
Special rules on, special committee on rules and procedures canceled.
I have an update for the Special Committee for Tax Abatement Review. I have a meeting scheduled with Deb Gould, Barry Lucass, and Stan in the next two weeks, and after that, hoping to start regular committee meetings and bring forth some of the, some of the ideas that are coming from that, once I have an understanding of how, how this would impact the city, and just look forward to having the discussion. That's it.
Now we're a wrap. Wow.
That's it.
Thank you.
Ty, I just, um, see your committee meeting.